Well, let's see if they're gone tomorrow, because they should be gone. I can't text him now because it's midnight. John, who do you think? Is John muted? Poor John's muted. I'm muted?
It could be us.
No, it's us. The TV's not, probably volume's not up on the TV.
At 100.
Nope, TV voice.
Oh.
Yeah, we made that mistake last week because we couldn't hear Larry. Oh, no, we're 52.
I think Larry might be muted. I-
Are you double muted?
Me? No.
Yeah.
I'll check again.
You see the green screen around John, so it looks like John's okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes your computer has a-
Can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now, but we can't hear him. Hang on one sec.
Audio? We're getting audio because he's talking. Yep. Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Speakers needs to be at least-
Yep, go to speakers, Samsung. Of course. Yep, try that.
Try it now.
You good? Alright, can you hear me? Yeah, Paul had it, Paul had it, the speaker coming out of the microphone instead of the, instead of where it's supposed to be.
Came out of somewhere.
We got, we got it fixed now. Larry, Larry's gone. Is Larry there?
Nope.
He was on and muted, but he just disappeared.
Texas fell into the Gulf of America. Are we good?
Yep.
Alright. Let's call a meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All. All. Roll call. We have John Rab on TV. Hi, John. Aaron McKeon, Kim Burkhammer, Melissa Prunier, and myself, Jim Morgan. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, uh, March 5th, Wednesday evening Planning Board meeting of the Board in Town. Make a motion to approve minutes from February 26th. All those in favor?
And February 3rd.
And, and February 3rd. Motion from February 3rd, please?
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Alright. Let's jump right into this. Dan Nor, come on up. Blidden Road. Slide a chair. I'll move my mess.
Because I mean, part of the, I just wanna, I might have a couple of questions, but I might not.
You are welcome to whoever you wish.
Alright.
So, just going on the Blidden Road.
This is the driveway. We, we approved the driveway so that you can have the access from that lot up to the road off this lot, the entrance to that lot. And then, uh, Mr. Norer is trying to get, um, building things in the driveway. But he lost his apples, so he's running down. The fire chief, Chief Rook, um, has told us that for a common driveways, it makes it easier for him-
If it's named.
For 911 purposes, 911 purposes, if those have a name rather than have numbers off of the road. So, we have to name your common driveway.
The whole driveway.
The whole driveway. Your driveway, your drivers will change.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
Because everything right now currently in my deed and everything else is 67 Blidden Road.
Yes.
Because I already got a number.
And that's going to change, and I apologize. We did not know that the way that he numbered. Because it's the way that it's done. Anything that shares that common driveway is going to have that name. That way, when they respond, rather than going and trying to find, oh, we've got a way up this driveway to get through the other number, they know it's such and such a name. And it's this number, and then the corresponding further number is up that driveway.
Are you on the road? Are you on the road? Is the house right on the road?
Well, it's, yes, it's right, I mean, my driveway's right off the road.
Yeah, but is the house set back off the road?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
So, I don't know if, he's gonna make, I don't know how he wants to name that name. Well, the select board is-
So, so the way that the, the way the naming, the way the naming works is the select board names the road, but the select board-
Well, it's not a road.
Nope, they name it. They name it. It'll be a drive. It'll be a drive, but-
A drive?
It's a drive.
Or it'll be a lane or a way?
It'll be a drive. It'll be a drive. According to the chief, it's a drive. And, um, you can name it whatever you want. It's-
But we have to approve the name.
But the selectmen have to approve the name.
Okay.
So it has to be kind of like a license.
So, you bring us in like three times if you want to follow it. Give us three things, three options.
Like, I guess I'm using an example of, uh, on Brighton Road, there's a driveway called Dog's Way.
Yep.
Which has two residences.
Correct.
Isn't that similar to what we all have?
Absolutely.
That's correct.
I went, I went through myself, but I did the same exercise.
So then, I guess we could call it a way or a lane? If that's what we choose.
The chief, when I talk to the chief, the chief would say that has to be a drive, but I'm, I'm sure you can talk to the, you can talk to the select board and figure that out. But driveway would, yeah, I mean, way would seem to work as well.
Well, I guess I just don't know the difference between what they have, um, there.
Yeah.
Which is exactly what we have. Common entrance and it diverges.
Yep. And that's, and they have that set up, that way, for 911. So, that's the, that's really the only thing you have to change. I don't even think you would need, honestly, I don't think you would even need to change the deed because the original deed is tied to the address that's there. So, I'm not sure you have to go through all of that.
Okay.
But-
I don't know if I had my street number at the time of the deed, right?
Probably not.
I think it's lot number-
Yeah, it's usually the deeds are lot numbers and tax map numbers, not-
Irrelevant, then I just will need it.
Right, book and page. So I think you're okay there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're okay on the deed.
Okay.
Um, you will have to change your other stuff, though. Registrations.
Right, in the-
Driver's license, which I would wait until it expires.
I think the Eastman just-
Was just reference-
Just a lot.
Reference to the lot.
I think you're fine there.
So, yeah, so updating my address.
And so we've added that to our policies and procedures when we do this again so that we know what we have to tell them.
So, thank you for this learning experience for us as board.
So, we, if we, we'll go to the selectmen, the three examples they used to want. Do we have to do an application? Is there anything we have to-
No, we don't have any formal paperwork for it. So, my suggestion would be, Melissa, can you put, um, can you put Dan on the agenda for the select board meeting, the next select board meeting?
There is no select board meeting for the next couple of weeks due to town elections. We are going to be meeting on the 11th at the voting, March 11th. So, if you can give some suggestions, maybe bring something in, any formal note in writing. I'd be happy to discuss that with the rest of the board members at that meeting.
Maybe you can use round one first, second here, choice.
Yeah.
No, yeah, no roles are named at Croydon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we don't want to have, you know, have we name it Dog's Way? We already have that. Dogs, D-A-W.
W-G-S, right?
Right, so that's, that's the kind of-
And you probably wouldn't want to have, you probably should check Newport, too, because we share this approach, so you're not going to want to have the same street as Newport.
Yeah.
So, just some things to think about.
We're gonna let our, I'm gonna let my grandsons pick out of it, you know? They've already come up with a couple of answers. Sounds will be original.
Make it fun. Make it fun. Okay. So that, and that would complete the process, and then Jay can enter that into the system and give him issue 911s, and then you can go to the post office and get addresses and do all that. So, do you think the select board can do it on the 11th at the polls?
Yeah, we're gonna, not immediately. We've got some stuff to sign. It's, it's a ward meeting.
You know what time you're gonna do that? Do you want to have a set time for them to come in or just drop by?
I think if you just bring in a letter and get it to us before the 11th, then we can act on it on the 11th.
Yeah, they don't need to be here for that.
Yeah, you don't even need to be. Just determine which one it's gonna be. And we should be able to, give us an email, and we can notify, uh, Chief Rook at the same time.
Perfect. Do you have, um, Melissa's email address that you can send us with?
It should be.
You know what? I've been sitting here for a year waiting for email, so. I'm hoping Santa, I'm hoping Santa brings it for Christmas. You know what? I'll believe it when I see it. I believe I see.
So, we'll name, we'll name the driveway, and we'll be good.
Then you should be able to get this done this month, I would think. Because if you guys approve it on the 11th, Jay should be able to get it in the system right away.
So, just email those, you?
Yeah. Saying that, um, please use, um, name our driveway, option one, option two, option three.
And just put Blidden Road somewhere on there so we can reference.
And don't worry about house numbers right now. We'll, we'll get, we'll hope Jay take care of that, because Jay will have to see what that comes up as. Sometimes they don't start at one, two. Sometimes they're weird.
Very odd.
Very strange, but we'll just make sure we get the, the driveway named, just so we can start that process immediately. And we'll be, I will make sure that everyone understands what happened, the process. They already know about your driveway. One of the things I do is explain to the board what's going on, and so. Should be initiative.
Yeah, we're glad we're getting it figured out. Alright.
Thank you, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Alright, so the next, next bit of business that I want to talk about, um, which is not on the agenda, but should have been. We have a, we have a petition warrant article for a moratorium on development, okay? And the moratorium on develop, can you hear me, John?
I can now, yes, thank you.
Larry, you're here. Hi, Larry.
He's muted.
I see that. Um, so we have a, we have a warrant article for a mor, for a one-year moratorium on major subdivisions that was put in by petition. But there's a process in order for that to be legal to get to, uh, to, to implement, and, um, there's a process that we have to follow. So, I'm afraid that if we don't vote on it as a planning board, that vote that we want to have it as a planning board, then I'm not sure that if the town votes for it and the planning board didn't support it, I'm not sure that they can enforce it. Because the procedure is the planning board is supposed to bring that to the voters under our warrants. And we didn't do that. So, I'm thinking that if we vote on this because the petition's in there, um, we can, and it's because it's, because it's by petition, there would be no public hearing for it. So, we say that we're, I, I would just like to vote whether we want to support it or not, so that we have that as part of the record. And then, after the thing, if it passes, then I'm just gonna send it all up to, to the town attorney and have the town attorney decide what, if we're, if we're able to enforce this, because it's a petition warrant article. We have to send all the petition warrant articles up to her if they pass anyway, because some of them, I, I'm not sure, are legal. Right? So, if they, if they fail, it's no big deal, because they failed. But if they pass, then you still have to get legal to look at it and say, yes, it's good, under RSA, blah, blah, blah. And then, we can say, okay, we're gonna implement this as law. So, I, the only piece that's missing is the planning board's support of the moratorium. So, I think that we should support the warrant article, because that will allow us to finish the master plan, enter into a capital improvement plan, and then put forth to the voters next March, um, a growth management ordinance, so that we can slow down stuff. You all, you good with that, John, you think?
I am, I agree. That's it.
We did. We did. We did. We've discussed this, this, so I had this, we talked about this in December. Alright.
Will this one show we're not being implemented to the top line? Now, if you're not, it's a petition, it's a petition warrant article.
It is. So, do you, does anybody have a copy of the petition warrant articles? Because I just wanted to read it for the record.
I can get it.
Thanks. Just that one? Yeah, okay. Pretty printables?
We have a proof copy, and it's on the website.
Save the thousand bucks. Save them.
Issues with the schools.
16.
Okay. Subdivision temporary moratorium till the town of Croydon vote to adopt a temporary moratorium on all subdivisions of rural district one. In, in the rural district for one year while the town updates its master plan and implements the capital improvement plan for the purpose of establishing growth management ordinance. This warrant was submitted by petition, recommended by the select board.
Yeah, include rural residential.
It's just, it's just in rural residential, because there's no room in it. Yeah, rural residential. Rural, rural district, it says. Doesn't say rural residential. Uh, you're, you're okay.
Okay.
I, I think verbiage is, I think the verbiage is fine. We have, we only have, what, three zones?
I wasn't sure if there was another one called rural.
No, no, it's, um, village district and-
Conservation.
And conservation. Right, right. Alright, so if somebody would like to make a motion to support this article 16.
I made a motion to support the petition article 16, uh, as in second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Larry? Give me a thumbs up, Larry. There's a thumbs up. Okay, good. Alright. Let the record show that Larry indicated yes with a thumbs up. Alright. Alright, I wanted to get that and that done, so now housekeeping thing is on the, make sure that's on the minutes, on the record. And then Martin Venson, come on up. So, back in the old days, when I was in government electronics, we used to call confidential plans NUCO, confidential projects NUCO. So that's why you had this on the public warrant, a public agenda, because I didn't want, this transaction hasn't gone through yet, so I wanted to show that. So, this family is, um, looking to build a compound in the Loon Lake property that's for sale in town, correct, uh, currently right now. And there are some, they're here to be able to find out what we would require as a town to be able to achieve the goal. So, Martin, if you'd like to go through the plan and kind of explain what you want to do, what the phase-in period would be, and, and, and we can talk about some of the, some of the issues and some of the problems that Kim actually has found an issue with the deed. I don't know if you were aware of, but go ahead, go through the thing.
First off, thank you for your opportunity to come for you all. Uh, my name is Martin Venson. And we have excellent advice here with Jennifer that have all helped us with the permitting process with New Hampshire. So, we're trying to like accelerate that a little bit, and we'll get as much information as we can before we go forward, so. Nice to meet you all. Um, this beautiful piece of property that we are looking at, we would love to, you know, establish a compound for a family in a rural setting, and live a little bit in the boots, but, you know, the beautiful setting of the lake and close to skiing areas and these kind of beautiful things that, you know, Croydon has to offer. And while the phasing is not that we're immediately gonna build all of these dwellings, so we're pushing a little bit the boundaries of what our dream could become over the next 50 years, right? We're saying even here, up a higher, maybe in 20 years, one of our children, uh, that are now six and eight, and, and they're going to school in Boston, uh, but once they maybe later older, they would like to have their sort of like retreat house here in beautiful Croydon. And so we would start more on the north side with, with one house, and maybe build one or two, when we have a family from Europe, which you might hear from my accent, come, come over every once in a while, to enjoy beautiful America, or some friends that we had in Boston. Because we do live in Boston, this would be a place that we would spend all our weekends, both winter and summer.
Excuse me one second. John and Larry, you guys, we emailed you the plan for this a few minutes ago, so you should have it in your email.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll check.
Yep, yep. So you guys know what to look at.
I started because I saw that you had a schedule.
No, go ahead. I, I forgot to tell them on the center.
So, in, indeed, the dwelling can be single-family homes, um, um, we would start indeed on the north side, close to the roads, to just break work from a, from the, to basically be connected with the utility over there. But eventually, uh, I'd like to, as you see there, battery plus solar, I would like to get a little bit of a sort of off-grid kind of situation, which is nowadays, many of these techniques, uh, possible. Uh, I am aware that we have a little road on that side driving, uh, to basically where, where you can currently go over. I, uh, Jimmy, or the people some advice on that, that there's definitely some important things that we need to, uh, investigate there, if that road is the right category, so that EMS and fire department services can actually reach it. And so we were obviously really invested in that, and also make sure that we have always plowing on contract, so that we keep that road accessible at all times. Uh, sounds like a more than important thing. I wouldn't even sleep, dude, if I had my European guests over there without them being able to call an ambulance, and so, uh, hopefully that would happen, but you never know. Um, so with that, I would love to know what the options are, and if, um, Croydon, okay with it before I would go into procure, making an offer and procuring such a land where I want to establish my future dreams together with them.
So, we're looking at, um, five houses on the lake. And four houses, excuse me, three houses off the lake.
Yeah, the boundaries on this lot.
So, this is one, go ahead.
Sorry. So, when you take a look at it, there's a, it's actually three lots that are, yeah, so, yeah, the north one is the sort of diagonal, then the one on the lake, and then it's more of that.
So, so this is the one he, he just subdivided into seven lots. You aware of that?
No, I am unaware of that.
Mr. Goodwin just finalized it, uh, last week. So, there's now seven lots on this one.
Ah, so that you can sell them individually?
You could. Yep, you could.
Ah, okay, I did not know that. Well, if I buy this, then I won't make use of that in the way that the town might think that somebody might be buying using.
Oh, I guess you got to put an offer on all seven.
And you're, you're sure that that's it, and it's not above it? Because why would he, I don't know why he would do that.
On this, on this 34-acre one?
No, this one here. Yeah, 34.
That's the 34.
Yeah, that is it. That is it. Yeah, you're right. That is it.
It is large enough. It's large enough.
Because he made, he made seven, five-acre lots, yeah. The site work.
Yeah, site work, yeah, which he did.
Yep.
And then you see there's that barn out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's it.
It's Buden Barn that goes a little bit up.
Yep, okay. Yeah, so that's actually, so that is, that is, that, we just signed the millars on that last week, so that is divided into the seven straight lots.
But we'll see them tomorrow morning when we walk the land, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
So, that piece is developable. Now, let's talk about the other stuff. Um, so as you can see, guys, it's five houses along the lake, and, um, and then three houses in the future behind. That's on, and that's one lot, two lots, three lots. So, I know that we, as a town, only allow one single-family home per lot.
Well, if the Adu ordinance goes through, then it would be a single-family home, and you could have a detached Adu. However, on-
No, I'm talking.
Yeah, you're talking just strictly single-family homes.
Yeah, because they're all gonna be two to three thousand or four thousand square foot.
The, the issue is gonna be class six.
Well, I figured that, yeah. Yep.
And then, so according to our ordinance, it's anything close to water, it's 100 feet, and then you have the shoreline protection here, which is a state thing. That we have no control over. We have to deal with the state.
Your setback from the water's 100 feet, which is more than the state's, which is okay. It's good to know.
So then, my question was, what I found going back in history is that forever and ever and ever, we have this as, as three tracks. I agree, three different tracks. That's what my red pen is. I don't know if you guys have seen this, but, so this was 16349, this one was 16641, and 16642. But going back all the way beyond 1980.
Oh, wow.
This has been all combined together, and then subdivided off into this, subdivided off into this, and has been known as the remainder lot, as 16349. So, I don't know the legal ramifications of all of these always being called 16349. And having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight subdivisions made off of a remainder lot. But it's all been combined, going from 600 acres to 500 acres to 400 acres to 300 acres. Is it three tracks or is it one track? That, I'm not a legal person. That's a title search real estate Google person. But the deed that Mr. Goodwin has, that was given to him, um, and goes back through several different people. If this is 16349, and even in your plan, you have three houses on this. If 16349 has a limitation that should residences be constructed upon it, the Eastman shall only benefit a maximum of two single-family homes. So...
That's fantastic. Anyway, thank you so much.
Kim is, Kim is very thorough. Kim is very thorough.
I, I would just happily have that checked out before we start really looking at some different things here.
That was for the three spot?
Yeah, yes, the 321 acreage, yeah.
The 331.
The 331.
It says, it says above it in very small font, um, 16 lots 349.
So, you see, it says here, 16349, it has an arrow here and an arrow here, and it's actually combining Hartley's Lot with Cutting Farm Lot, and if you add up the acreage.
That's the 331.
That's the 331.
Yeah.
So, that's-
So, the deed restriction is a, is a, is a problem, but we, we can't even handle that. That's not us. That's, that's on the, that's on the original deed of the property. And that's saying, basically, that you can only build two houses on this whole thing.
Yeah, except for the northern part.
Except for this part up here, which is seven. And that, but you don't want to be up there. You want to be on the lake.
Yeah, you want to be next to the water.
This is-
So, I have a question, so I have a question for the board in relationship to, um, the town's desire to maintain conservation. So, would the, would the zoning board, with a recommendation from the planning board, be able to issue a variance to allow the five homes on the single lot? Provided that the lot would never be subdivided or sold as individual units? Because then, they wouldn't have to subdivide, they wouldn't have to go through that expense, and it would be basically a compound.
I think that that might be something we could have some joint meetings, we should take care of it.
Zoning and zoning?
Yeah, we'd have-
Because this, the idea here is, right, we're, we're looking at 350 acres that we don't want somebody to put a class four road in, or four or five road in, and then build 50, 60 homes in here.
I agree.
If these folks don't buy it. So, I would think that it would be in the best interest of the town in order to preserve the conservation of the whole property, to allow a special exception or, or variance to, there would really, really be a variance. And the hardship is that the land would be subdividable otherwise. So, it's really a hardship on the town.
And even though that's an unofficial amendment, still a lawful watershed.
Right. So, there's benefits across the board there for that, right? So, the other issue, um, the other issue that the folks have is that there's legislation in Concord right now that are, that is working to increase the distance. The front, from the state. And what's the state going to?
They have not shared that.
They haven't shared what the distance is?
Not, not with me, anyway. They, they usually, nine hour.
Who's putting, do you know, is it, is it one of the legislators putting in the, the bill, or is this coming from Fishy Game or DES?
I don't know who it's coming from. I don't, I don't, it, I tend to think DES, but that's-
So-
Because they've done a lot of strange things in the last two.
But that would have to be, that would have to be in, that would have to be in the, in the legislative cycle right now. So, there has to be a bill number associated with it.
And I don't know of that.
I haven't seen anything.
No.
I haven't seen anything. I watched the bills. It's part of what I.
Yeah, that's, that's, we, we're, so and I, I checked the list and I didn't see any coming in there for it. There's a lot of chatter about it. I know that.
There's a lot of chatter, but there's a lot of things that are last minute that you, like the seasonal high water separation for, for piping stop. Just ridiculous. But um.
But it does come last minute and then gets rolling real fast.
But this, but, but this would have to. But this is gonna, but this would be, this particular legislation would impact every water body in New Hampshire. So the problem is that there, there has to be debate and pushback on this because there's landowners that haven't developed.
Yeah. And it may be as simple as it's now going to be a hundred feet, not just fifty feet. That's a no time zone. You're already at a hundred feet. So you, you know what I mean? But I could, I can't imagine we.
And we spoke about that together, but like you take the entire south side of the property that is so steep that if you're not in this part where you're, where it's flood. Yeah, you basically can't develop it anymore in the sense of you can build a boom down on the lake.
So the development risk from the town's perspective is the three thirty-one lot and then this seven lot side of Cass Street. That's, that's what you're mentioning, you said.
Yeah, we've already approved the seven lots on Cass Street.
Right, but.
But if it was purchased, then it would just be what you're looking at.
Yeah, you're saying that this three thirty-one is the one that we should be working on.
Correct.
Because they can't do it currently with this, um, along with the lake, right?
Correct, correct. And this is steep slope there too.
Yeah.
So past that second line, that's a steep slope. They can't really build anything. And, and honestly, you're not going to build a family compound on a lake if, if the house is on the lake. I mean, a hundred feet is okay. It's livable, but five hundred feet is not. You know, that would be ridiculous. And you'd be on a side of the hill.
And it would also help with the.
Be a nice water slide though. So when you look at something like this from a, from a town standpoint, you know, we don't have any commercial development that's going to happen in, in Croydon that's going to be millions of dollars. And so if, if we want to work to increase our tax bases, developments like this are key to doing that. If the landowner and the, and the, and if the landowner is willing to accept the, you know, the covenants to keep it conservation. I mean, that's really the.
We've got to build open space. The only thing that's going to help us is open space.
Right.
And that's exactly what we want to, we want to live in open space.
Yes, why?
Lots like for us with the, the lake and, and what, I mean, we're close to the ski areas and we're close enough to Dartmouth, Hinchcock.
An under two hour drive from Boston.
You could actually fly to Lebanon.
So put something in the deed.
So, yeah, so the deed, the deed needs to be looked at because of the language in the deed. Um, you know, because we can't approve anything with that language. But then I think what the steps would be, would be to have a, to call a joint meeting with zoning and, and B O S and sit down and explain to them what this is, why we believe that the variance, a variance would be warranted in this case in order to preserve three hundred and fifty acres of land, three hundred and sixty acres of land. And, and after that joint meeting, they would file application for the variance and then they would get the variance. And then they would move forward with our standard building operations. You wouldn't need it for the deed restrictions. I have no idea how to do that. I don't think that's a butter. You still have to notice the abutters. You still have to allow the abutters to come in and, and voice their opinion and everything, yes. I have no idea how that processes. I do know that you can go, that, that there is a process. I mean, John, do you, do you know the, the changing deed restriction process? He's an attorney.
It, it really depends on who benefits from it, who, who originally granted it and, and what property it benefits. So you really have to do that, the title work to see when that was granted, when that, and who benefits by it, and then they would have to sign off on it.
Okay.
Uh, if you send me a copy of the deed, I'd be curious to look at it because I'm a title nerd, so.
Larry, any comments? You gotta unmute.
Still muted.
You're still muted, Larry. That's definitely on your end because it's your, it's your mic. There you go.
Great.
All right, any questions? No, still can't hear you, Larry. Oh, weird. You might have the wrong mic selected. You can call me, Larry, if you want. I'll just put you on speaker. I think, I think you're there. No, no, I'm muted. It's like watching paint dry.
You know, in, in any event, I would recommend that you have a land use attorney look at this very closely as far as um, and what the, but the title and the setbacks that are required under D E S regs before you, you know, pull the trigger.
That's, I think, what Jennifer said to do, right?
Yeah, it's fifty foot, well, it's a hundred feet.
Okay.
Yes, from, thank you, John. That, that really helped. But indeed, this is a surprise. And it's a surprise that this is always.
Well, he wasn't looking to do anything with it. So I don't know whether he's, if he subdivided to try to add value. I have no idea.
I think with the moratorium on it for years, he probably jumped on it.
Oh, he probably did. He probably did. He, Donnie pays attention, so that, that may be the case.
And he said that he wasn't wanting to do anything. He said this. He wasn't going to do anything, but that he was just trying to have it ready.
Okay, so let's assume that we have pushback on the homes on one lot. Then the alternative of that would be is to upgrade that road to class five and then he could subdivide as much as he wanted under the five acre zoning if that passes or three and a half as it currently sits, right?
That's the road that goes along the lake.
Yeah. Right. But you guys understand that the huge risk with, with that allowance is that this whole section up here becomes developable and then anything off of this becomes developable. Not now, but a hundred years from now, fifty years from now. You know, that's what we're trying to stop.
If you put that in the deed, wouldn't that stop it?
Well, we're not going to make the guy, if the, if we're going to make the guy put a class five road in and then do a subdivision, we're not going to put a deed restriction on it because that's, that would be a little bit over the top. Yeah, so if we allow the, if we allow five homes on a one lot, then the, the payback for that is that it will never be subdivided. It has to be sold as, as five houses.
To stay with the, the one lot.
Right.
Yeah.
And the rest of it would just be open space.
But that allows him to get going, if the moratorium passes, that allows him to go now because it's one lot.
And, okay, and then saying if you change that entire road, then this becomes, and then you.
Then you subdivide.
Yeah, and that's not what the town wants, it's not what we want.
The impetus to this is that we just ran a good survey. We're doing a master plan.
Survey. He's very well in tune with what's going on.
This is almost a famous stage because we had watched a few evenings, the town hall meetings. We turned right away, very. We were like, this is, looks like nice folks.
But, yeah.
If we're going to make this a forever place, if the, uh, those, the kids are out of school, then we might retire here.
It's a great place to retire, if you can, if you know what that word means. I haven't quite figured that out. Or retire when I'm dead.
Okay.
Larry, did you get your mic fixed? Nope, can't hear you. Larry, just call me. Just call me. I'll put you on speakerphone. Just call me. I'm curious to see if Larry has any questions. I don't want to exclude him from the discussion. He'll be back. I'm going to mute mine.
No, I'm going to mute him here so we don't hear that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So to think, that means the next action for us is really figure out the deed. I have, of course.
Hey, it's Game of Thrones, man. Hey, Larry, that works a lot better.
Yeah, but okay, but okay, now I'm looking at the mute button. I just hit unmute and it should be coming across.
Yeah, they're, they're quite, quite far apart.
And how many acres is that?
Hundred and twenty-three. It's three hundred and thirty-one total, a hundred and twenty-three in that particular section.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay. I'm going to keep you, I'm going to keep you on this, on the phone just in case you have something else as the meeting goes on, okay?
Hey, thanks, thanks.
On speaker in him. And then I'll speaker him back when he needs to talk. Okay. John, we still have you though, right?
You do.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions?
That's fantastic. I really appreciate your thinking, Larry. For me, John said, pull the trigger.
All right, awesome. Hope to, hope to see you back. I'm going to email you um some of the building permit information and some of the other stuff. I'll send it all to you digitally.
Yes.
Um, now that I know um what we'd be looking at. So there's a, so the, basically, the two-step process from the town side is to um, once you've purchased the land, we can, you can ask us to meet with the O S and meet with zoning, talk to them about what our goal here is to preserve this as conservation, see if that is, and those restrictions would be agreeable.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I would, I would like to talk for five, five minutes.
What, what is your pulse on those groups and what they would approve and not?
I, yeah, I would say there's no reason why we would do this, you two are purchased. I don't see why we could have a northern town hall meeting. We should get together before we start going through the master plan and everything else after the election.
April.
And yes, and after the master plan revision center. So I would actually say, I, what is, what is your timeframe for purchasing?
Pretty quick, but because, because of the permitting from New Hampshire, if you can, even build something close to the lake, but then again, it is.
Yeah, they've got due diligence to do that.
But I have to do the, it's, it's becoming a little bit of a time crunch where we think, oh, over the years, people build a, a house when your mom comes by.
I think that if you can't, if you can't find a bill that's associated with the extension of the water distance, if you can't find a bill, nothing's happening. They can't do that by legislative action. Excuse me, they can't do that by gubernatorial action. That, that has to go through the legislature. It has to go to the Senate.
And we might just get the permit, even though we might have built a lake.
Yeah, so I think that, I think that um, I think even if the state doubled it, we're still at our distance.
Right, I, my, I can ask a question. But it, your rules right now still say only two buildings per lot.
No, our, our rules say only one building per lot.
Only one building.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to town meeting to put in A D Us, but the A D U maximum square footage is thousand square feet.
But there is a process for to be an exception.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. We would have to have, yeah, yeah, we, we would have to have, we would have a joint meeting. I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to guess that it would be very favorable to both courts. Yep.
Like it's too much effort to get a, a full three by four, maybe maybe get a talk quickly with the select board. Just touch base with the two chairs and just get a pass.
Yep.
We can do that. And, and after town meeting, there's going to be a conservation commission.
Correct, correct. So that'll all help that, that process.
But yes, I, 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 let us see what we can pull together.
But the real thing for us to get, I see now is a new obstacle.
Is to get a, is to get a, yeah, is to get a, a real estate attorney and have a real estate attorney look at that. John's going to look at that too, so we'll get some comments back and we'll share those comments with you. If that's okay, John, we can share your comments with folks.
That's fine. It'll be unofficial, but I'll, I'll get you my comments.
Absolutely, John, but I appreciate you if you take a land with your possibilities.
Okay.
You'd be asking for an exception for five dwelt.
Whatever, whatever you guys come back with. So if you change your mind, you only want four, you want six, you just.
As long as we conserve.
Yeah.
A possible.
Yep, 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 yep.
Awesome. So dream, dream now and conserve the land for very long.
Be great. Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda is Clayton. Is Clayton here? Great. Henry, come on up. Grab a chair. We'll substitute Henry for Clayton.
Me too.
Can I get a, can I get a motion to accept changing Clayton for Henry?
I, Michael Wilson, that we um exchange Henry Tushet for Clayton on Monday news.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
These are the lots we're referring to. This is Alan Piper's lot, my son-in-law. Uh, this lot is my daughter and son-in-law on Harrison. This is our lot, and this one's our lot. They're getting ready to sell. They built on a lot that we gave them. We had the intention of wanting to retain the back property um so that it was all
Contiguous.
Yeah. So the thought is um a lot line revision, bringing this down to that three and a half acres, doing the same thing with Kayla and Ryan's lot and has to be, has to be done together. Because Kaylee and Ryan are in between Alan and Samantha's and our lot. So um it would kind of be a two-step process.
So this, so you'd bring, so basically you'd put a lot line across here, right?
Yeah.
And then this back half just becomes part of this.
In respect to.
This lot?
Yes.
Right? So that lot line goes away and it just, it ends up being here. Why would we have a problem with it?
We don't. That's fine. It would become one lot of record. And if you, there's nothing to do with it because you wouldn't have the vote for it.
Right.
Um, you know that there's a petition warrant article for, so you kind of want to start that quickly.
That's, I totally get it because we don't, we prefer to do the three and a half acres and not the five.
Yeah.
So, so my question was.
Well, hang on. You can, after, after it passes, if the five acres pass, you can go to the zoning board.
It's already started. If we, if we look at it now, it's about as.
Yeah, I'm, all right, I'm fine with that too, but I mean, he could go to, he could go to zoning.
So we're trying to, we're trying to alleviate any timeframes because they won't, they're, they're, they're purchasing in North Carolina. They're ready to go.
Okay.
Um, so we don't want any delays with having the property ready for them to sell.
Okay.
And that's sort of where we're at is.
Draw it up and bring it in for the next meeting in April.
Yeah, I would say that we accept the conceptual so that we make sure that we didn't use a timeframe because it's not only making the lot size larger, it's.
That's right. Okay.
Yeah. The road frontage on these are fine, they're both three hundred acres. Yeah, so that wasn't.
Okay, so that's not a problem, okay.
And the, so the only thing was that acreage rise, we looked at it real, real quick, we're between three and a half and four acres on.
As, as long as the new lots, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, as long as they're, they don't make the lots non-conforming or then you should be fine.
Yeah, it's just, it, it'd just be a lot on.
How many acres of these?
Uh, this one's nine point six seven, this one's ten point two eight.
Plenty of land. They have nine acres and ten acres, John.
And, and frontage too? The frontage would be, okay.
The frontage will be on the lots they're selling. They don't need frontage on the back lot.
Okay.
And it'd be less than the five acres, but they both have a system. So it's not like it's.
Okay. All right, so I will entertain a motion to accept this as a conceptual.
I second that motion.
I need you to make the motion, I'm not.
I make the motion that we accept this as a conceptual plan from Henry Tushet and.
Alan Piper.
Alan Piper. Piper?
Piper.
Viper. To create a lot line adjustment with a merger of.
And that would also include the Harrison's, which is lots.
And also include the Harrison lot, lot seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I got a thumbs up from Larry. Thank you, Larry. All right, you're good.
Where are you going to, uh?
Someone near Clayton. Uh, it's about a half hour outside of Raleigh.
I know. Where are you going down to part two?
Yes, yeah. Yep, it's gonna be nice.
It's not, it's not a lot since I was here. It's a nice area.
Yeah.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you guys.
Appreciate your time, guys.
Yep, thank you, thank you. All right, that finishes all our old business and let's talk about our chapters. Did you guys read the chapters? Larry?
Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, let me ask you a question. My book has an external microphone, should I, attached to my computer or?
No, so you, so at work the last time you were here, so I don't, you've got some setting that's not right.
That could be, but I wouldn't know where the hell the work force.
So what he should do is disconnect from the audio.
Yeah, disconnect from the audio so that you don't get that feedback.
And then call into the number.
Phone call. It says choose one of the, excuse me, a, a, in a phone call or computer audio connected.
Yeah, phone call.
Does that work?
It should call your cell phone, or we call it.
Should call my cell phone.
Or give you a number to dial into.
Oh, okay, yeah. Look at all these numbers, any of these work?
Yes.
Okay. Not working.
Uh, you know what, we're, we're on to, we're on to, so I guess just, if you could just listen, listen for, uh, to me for a second, uh, we're, what we're on to is, the five chapters that Vicky sent in. So you guys were emailed those and I just, um, everybody sent, Kim has sent changes to Aaron, I have my changes to Aaron. Um, do you guys have any changes to those first five chapters?
You know, Ashley, I just saw two. I looked around, I didn't see, I only have chapter four and five.
Yeah, I sent another email that night of the meeting, John.
Okay.
With all of the chapters attached. Did you not, if you didn't get that, I can certainly send that out again.
Yeah, please do. Send it, yeah, send it to the, uh, John Preston, Brad Boy.
One second.
And it. And I can.
Did you get it, Larry?
I, I only got four and five.
Okay. I'll get those out to both of you guys. If you can review those and get back to Aaron by Monday, that would be wonderful.
Okay. A chapter, a chapter four, I, all I have to say is that somebody who lives at Rocky Bound Pond, I think they got the depth wrong.
Yeah, Melissa, Melissa's sending it to you guys now. All five chapters will come together.
It's five separate attachments, but it's all in one email.
Yeah, okay. Hey Larry, if you don't, if you don't mind, why don't you just shut the Zoom down and you'll be able to hear us a lot better and you won't get this feedback.
Great idea.
One thing before I go off is, um, uh, the microphone, the way it is, works a hell of a lot better than.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just X out of Zoom and stay on the phone with us.
Okay, fine. Leave meeting.
There you go. Now I don't have any feedback, that's perfect.
Okay, and I, I can't see you, but I can hear you well.
What is the depth of Rocky Bound Pond?
Um, I think the max, I, maximum depth is like thirty feet. And I, I think I saw that on a fishing game map. I can, I can find that and send it off to you.
Send, send it to Aaron. Aaron's taking it every.
Yeah. Aaron is the keeper of the record.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, I'm aware that there's a very deep hole in the middle of it.
Any fish down there?
No, I'm supposed to say no. Supposed to tell everybody there's no fish there.
That's right, that's right.
I think there's fish there, that's it, I'm going out. Um, I had.
Oh, here.
I know that Vicky said she's guessing that it's floodplain, but we've gone through this one. Four, three, naturally, floodplain, that's true. All this, I, this is telling me a story, brought up all the time. We have floodplains. Language in our zoning ordinance, we have floodplains language in our subdivision ordinance, because at the very beginning. What, did we lose John too?
Just his picture.
No, no, I'm here.
At the, at the very beginning, we adopted floodplains, but it's very restrictive. What you can do in a floodplain is with building, you have to make sure that everything's above water level and it's anchored and it's, I mean, it's, it's like eighteen pages of how you have to specifically build to be in a floodplain.
So we have an ordinance?
We have one.
We had one.
For one year.
Okay.
And then I think with the restrictions on building and what you have to do, you haven't had engineers jobs, our building inspector couldn't do anything. So if you wanted to build or add onto your home, you have to come in with stamp, engineer's jobs.
Okay.
To be able to do it. So people were just like, I, I can't.
Right.
So it went away.
So it went away, but the definitions are still in the zoning ordinances. That's what Vicky's saying.
Yes, and that's why they're there.
Okay, so should we remove those or should we create a floodplain, a floodplain ordinance?
We, there is no way that you, the board are going to accept a floodplain.
So we should update, we should, we should have the zoning board look at removing the floodplain definitions.
Yeah, we don't allow anything that has a hundred feet of, so many people are.
Right on the water, yeah.
Yeah, and you laugh there, John, but it's true, but that's the law you should enforce.
Okay.
So what do we do? Do we ask to keep opposing and change that to mention one of the paragraph that says that. That the land removing floodplains language from existing ordinance?
Yeah, we can tell, we can just tell Vicky to take it out.
The post section?
Yeah.
Floodplains?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just has to say we're not currently participating in the national floodplains.
All right, so that's the first, these paragraphs.
Yep. Yep.
I mean, it's, it's necessary, it's a great thing, we should have floodplains, but there's only, it's really right here along the sugar, and so basically it's kind of cashed.
Okay, does anybody know, I've got some questions from Vicky as well. Does anybody know what, what, what is Muzzy Park?
Right there behind us. Irma Muzzy and Iver Muzzy.
Okay.
Gave this land to the.
So it's on the town hall land?
And it might be part of the historical society. And I said, and I, I gave that to them, I said, we might want to reach out to Pat and Jane Urdin to maybe get a better idea of Muzzy Park.
The Pat Sawyer Memorial Park is the fire station did that, correct?
I don't know who put in all the different towns, the equipment, I believe it was the.
It was the fire station. So that's the fire station. Um, are there any other parks in Croydon?
Not that I know of.
I'd like one, I'd like one at the end of Lovren Hill, at two Lovren Hill. I'm not, I'm not eating them Wheaties today. Okay, swimming. Swimming, are there any public beach?
Yes. Down at Croydon, there was that creek, that beach.
It's not Loon Lake, it's Rocky Bound. Rocky Bound.
Is that the overflow? No. Is there a beach at the overflow?
I don't know what the overflow is.
That's down, that's this thing down here.
Yes, because we put a port of all of them.
That's Rocky Bound.
That's Rocky Bound?
That's Rocky Bound.
Okay, so the answer to that, any public beach or access on overflow or Loon Lake? No. Uh, go ahead.
Okay, right next to Harry's property, there's a little, a little piece of beach.
Sorry.
I forgot what her name was, she was a lovely gal and died, and they put a bench there for.
Harry Newcomb? Yeah.
Yeah, but it's right next to his lot.
Is that on Loon Lake?
No, Rocky Bound. Oh, Rocky Bound, okay. Yeah, the, the, the town has a right of way down to the lake that Harry granted years ago. And by the way, someone said they're.
Everybody has the right of way to get onto, um, Conniston Lake.
Yeah, there is, there's a boat ramp down, um, uh, Conniston.
So Conniston Lake?
Yeah, there, there's, it's, there, I, there's some, I thought there was a statute that you could not restrict, um, access to, you know, uh, to lakes in this, in the, in the state.
Over ten acres, yes. Right? Oh, okay, oh, so, so there is a public beach at Rocky Bound?
Well, it's a public beach, it's, uh, twenty feet wide.
Yep, that's okay. Public beach at Rocky Bound.
That's me in the truck.
Okay, and then Conniston Lake has a public beach?
No, it has a public, uh, boat access.
Boat access, got it.
Yeah, Conniston, and it goes away.
And then Loon Lake, does Loon Lake have a public boating access or beach?
I don't know.
No.
No public beach? That, that, they don't, they don't have boats, aren't allowed on Loon Lake?
Yes, they are.
For campers only.
No electric motors and no, I'll look it up.
Electric motors.
Are allowed? Okay.
But they do not have a public access.
But they don't have public access.
Right, okay. All right, so there's no public access to Loon Lake. All right, and then the last question is ATVs. Is there a map of the ATV trails?
I can give you the order that points out all roads.
Perfect, can you send that to Vicky? All right.
What, what is it?
Um, I'm assuming there might be trails since ATVs are allowed on roads, but maybe not, maybe official trails are mapped. Should we show which roads have ATVs? Do ATVs use snowmobile trails?
Let's see, ATV that allows all of our off-roaders to use our roads. There's an ordinance in town, state, which roads they can't be used.
That's exactly what she wants.
Yeah, that's a different.
All right, so Kim, descend. All right, that's all Vicky's questions, so good. All right.
Okay. It's also on the website.
So Larry and John, if you can review the five chapters and see if there's anything else that you know from the history of the town that you would like to add or that's in there, that's information that is ac, is not accurate. If you could please get an email back by Monday, that would be wonderful.
Okay, because I have them all now on Friday.
Okay, beautiful.
Um, Kim, I just sent you a copy of the DES, um, map of Rocky Bound. And I think the confusion is, uh, DES lists, uh, lists the maximum depth as nine point one meters, not feet.
Ah.
That would be thirty feet. Pretty close. Okay. Okay. All right. So if you guys are gonna get those, what did we owe her by Friday? Oh, no, no, that was the email thing and the other thing. We were gonna get back to her with the first five chapters and we were supposed to get the, um, posters. The posters, correct. Yep, and when, and so let's, let's move to that, and that's really the last item. Where are those two posters I passed around? I have to put them up.
I have not seen them yet.
Does Kim have them? Kim has them. Okay, so this is the Croydon, we're gonna do a Croydon photo contest, so different photos around town. And then I needed to take out the questions on the community event because there shouldn't be, um, if you have any questions about the contract, the contest, that should be on that one. So I gotta, I'll make those corrections and then we can post those on social media and get those out.
Can you repeat that? It shouldn't be a contest?
Yeah, down on the bottom of this one.
The community event's not a contest.
Oh, oh, okay.
Do you have any questions about this contest?
Do you need this one? Do you need the warrant list back? Or is this copies? You handed me that. That was the list of all the warrants?
No, I handed you the book. That's your copy.
So it was supposed to be Croydon connects, but I was, Cornish, Cornish connects, I, I wanted to call it something besides visioning session. So before I was thinking that it was Croydon coming together to talk.
I just wanna make sure it's clear to people what it's like, the planning board, master plan.
However, I want to draw some suggestions, but I don't think that, you know, saying master plan envisioning session is.
Can you just say Croydon Planning Board Community Event?
So we can call it Croydon, the, the Planning Board, Master Plan, but they need to know what the community event is for.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion on this one? For publication, it says all photos will be published. Can we say all approved photos? Because we could be. It could get.
It could get stupid. So let's say all approved. Just can you write that on there? Because I'm gonna take these back and then I'm gonna go give the edits to Vicky. But I absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, she was saying.
Me, digital, delicious, so, process for commercial development, multi-familiar.
Is this her first day here? Can I see that?
You can have that list back.
I don't know what to call it, I just want, want, that, yes, I know what is happening, it's, it's a great way to communicate to others.
Yeah, you're gonna, okay, thank you.
We need their perspective for the back of it, but how do you put that whole thing into?
Well, you could explain that in the first paragraph.
Which is what she has.
I would just, instead of Croydon connection, which means nothing to anybody, just say Croydon Planning Board, just so people may see it, they, oh, that's a planning board, then they gotta read.
No, what is possible?
I, I'm gonna agree because there's so much, Croydon does this, Croydon does this, yes. That let's just say Croydon Planning Board invites you to a community event, or Croydon Planning Board Community Event, and then.
Invites all of us.
Yeah.
I want people to want to.
Yes, yes, but don't, I wouldn't create a new name at this point in time.
So they have a question.
What?
Was the, we don't wanna call it Croydon connection. Steps up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so we should just call it Croydon Planning Board invites you to a community event.
Could I interject something here?
Please, please.
I'm, I have to be reading the introduction. Can you explain to me what the hell the meaning of the first sentence in the second paragraph is?
Introduction.
Yeah, the second paragraph is the first sentence.
Towns that determine their current or likely growth pattern?
Yeah, keep reading.
Services or finances are not meeting the desires of the residents, need a master plan to guide a new direction. Towns that are happy with their current growth pattern, services and finances can assess how to continue in that vein to ensure a healthy, happy community through future decisions.
Second, second sentence makes sense. The first sentence, the desires of the residents, is there a pot, an apostrophe needed there? Need for a master plan to guide a new direction, and is there a word missing there?
Are not meeting the desires of the residents, need a master plan to guide a new direction. Second paragraph where it starts with towns. This one.
It just doesn't make any sense. Oh, yours is different?
Did she update it?
Oh, this says, yeah, two, six.
This is two, six, twenty-five.
Six, yeah.
The second paragraph where it says town?
Has it been fixed?
It's not even there.
I, I know, I got the two-six version. I got the two-six version also. Towns that determine their current or likely growth pattern, service or.
Yeah, the email is just, so the one that she just sent, the email, that's why I was getting that phone. Because the email that she sent, she updated.
When did she send it?
Why would she be making updates when we haven't made our updates? That gets, gets very confusing.
And she didn't send it to me.
Yeah. Yeah, she didn't send it to me. I got the, all the Word ones is what she's, I got a copy of the email she sent to Aaron, which had all the Word documents. Maybe she updated those.
Yes, I think she sent.
I got them, yeah. So maybe we should send those to Larry. Yeah, all right, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna, guys, I'm gonna send you a different set right now. Okay.
All right, then I'll, I'll keep reading, I'll, I'll look at those and I'll keep reading.
No, that's a great, that's a great. No, that's a great, that's a great find, uh, that's a great find, Larry, because we would've wasted time, hang on.
Yeah, because she really did some changes in the later chapters.
Okay.
And I think she changed, she, she made those changes based on our meeting.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe.
Oh, that might explain.
That might explain it. Okay, all right, so that's, okay, so she made changes after our workshop last week. Vicky Davis, let me find this stuff. I got it right here, here we go. Yep, no, I've got the, okay, I'm forwarding you guys.
Oh, okay.
All of the, all of the revised ones that I just received on March third. Okay.
Oh, here you go.
No, hang on, you don't have them yet.
The finances are not meeting, are not, are not meeting. Okay.
All right, I just sent you guys the Word documents revised.
Excellent. Thank you.
It needs, it needs the word and in there, that's, that'll fix it.
All right.
Like, I'll, I'll send that to, to Aaron at some point.
Don't send it yet. Look at the documents that.
Yeah, look at the documents that I just emailed you at, not eight, ten PM. Those are the ones you wanna look at, not the five that Melissa sent.
Oh, 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 got you, got you, okay, got you.
Not the five, yeah, not the five that Melissa sent.
Okay, so the new five?
The new five.
Okay, got you.
March third.
And did you send me those as well? James, did you send them to me as well?
I did not, you won't?
Yes, please.
Hang on, Melissa. All right, done.
Thank you.
All right, I will make the changes to these posters and I will get that done and we will get them off to you guys so that we can publish them on social media and put them on the website. Because today's Wednesday, so I'm gonna see if Paul is coming down here tomorrow, maybe he can get these on the website, so that'd be good. I'll get those fixed and back from Vicky. Um, I don't see any other business, correct? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys. We're adjourned. The next meeting is March the twentieth. That's with Vicky on Zoom. Okay?
Got you.
All right, awesome, thank you.
All right, see you then.
Take care.
I just want everyone to see.
Bye, honey.
Just want everyone to see a proud granddad feeding his granddaughter today.